I would like to advise all those present that notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. That notice was published, city website copies provided, Bergen Record, L Special, The North Star Legend, Jersey Journal, also placed on the Vulcan Board in the Lobby of City Hall. Any objections, if any, should be made to the city clerk.
Thank you. It's all rise. Plush the flag.
Much allegiance to the flag, United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Mr. Cohen. Here. Fisher.
Yes, here.
Jaboor.
Here.
President Zano.
Present.
Mr. Quintero. Mr. Ramos.
Present, I'm sorry.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
President Doyle.
Present. We'd like to start the meeting tonight. It was a year ago today that we lost our colleague. The clerk's office was good enough to get the flowers. And so for Councilwoman Giattino, November 5th, 2024. So one moment of silence. All right. Thank you. As far as administrative matters, you can see on the agenda, there are a certain number of matters are carried. Second readings, number four and five are carried for the planning board to review before we will address them. CD5, I've got Radar O'Reilly here whispering to me. CD5 is being carried. And it will come back soon and most likely amended. And then is number six off? Yeah, okay. So, all right. Thank you. So we'll start with second readings.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 192-4A, parking for persons with disabilities to add reserved parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you very much. Patricia Waiters, you've signed up for ordinances. Did you sign up for this one? Excuse me? No? Okay. No other members of the public have signed up?
Motion to close public portion.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Council members. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jaboor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance of City of Hoboken, Chapter 59A, Department of Public Safety, Article 4, Division of Fire, Section 5, 59A, 31, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Farina. Okay, Patricia, you're not, you didn't sign up for that either? So no other members?
Motion to close public portion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
Yes. Councilman President Zano.
Director Franti, I apologize, it's been, as you can see, a crazy week. So I had some questions. So, and I, our meeting was brief, so my question would be is, I thought about this more. Why are we, why wouldn't a battalion chief, why wouldn't that go to seven and a deputy chief? Like, in other words, instead of captains? Can you explain that to me?
Yes. So two reasons. So two years ago, the fire marshal position had never been ordained by the City of Hoboken. We discussed this in committee. So at the time, fire marshal was Stephen DeVincent. After he retired, we had a selection process, and Andrew Fry became the fire marshal, who is not a captain. We also had a situation last year where we made a temporary increase in the table. We had asked for one increase of one. We promoted one fire captain before his list was about to expire. And the council committee, you were the chair at the time, had asked if we could make this temporary and roll this back. I said I would roll back at least one next year for that position.
Okay. The other question?
With the seven spots here, which is the adding of the four through grant, the two captains coming back.
119.
And which basically no one loses their position in that captain's rank. And then the one deputy chief, if you look at salary alone, there'll be a net decrease of $140,000.
Okay. And then I have a technical question to help me on this. Intern police chief, or intern, Jesus, intern police chief. Intern fire captain Peskins, he considered a battalion chief on the table of organization? Or this is a separate?
He's considered the chief in that position.
Considered chief.
Yes.
So not a battalion chief.
That's correct.
Okay. And in the deputy chief, there is a test, the first year can be appointed, and then there's a test after that.
So what will happen was, the way you kick in the test, there would be an appointment made, offered by the city, by the appointing authority, to make someone the interim deputy chief. Once that happens, it will kick off a test, that a test would probably happen in the spring, and then there would be a test for that position.
Okay. And one last point that I ask almost every meeting, I don't know if you can comment it, or Corporation Council can comment it. Have we complied with the court order yet for reinstating Chief Crimmins in the chief's role?
From my knowledge, what I've gotten from Corporation Council is that that matter is at the appellate division of New Jersey. As we discussed in committee, there's two different tracks that leads us in 2026. One is with the situation that's at the appellate division. One is Chief Peskins, he ages out, so he has to leave the job in early 2026. So either way, we are going to have a different chief. And this structure will help either of those two tracks, as we discussed in committee.
And I'll ask Corporation Council, thank you, Director Franti. Corporation Council, what, have we, have we been fined yet by the state or the court for not, I think it's up to $10,000 since we haven't followed their ruling? Have we been fined at all, or no?
Sorry. I'll have to look into it and get back to you. I don't know.
So technically, we're not, even though we have filed an appeal with the, we have filed an appeal with the courts for the Crimmins?
Can you repeat that again?
We have definitely filed an appeal on Chief Crimmins contesting the verdict. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I'll have to follow up.
That was filed in April. The answer is yes.
Yes, okay.
It was filed in April.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Farina?
Close the hearing. We did that, okay.
We did that.
Right. Mr. Cohen.
824.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Jaboor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 190-9 entitled Stop Streets Designated to Add Multiway Stop Control for the Intersection of 7th Street and Garden Street.
Patricia Waiters, did you sign up for this? Okay. So you didn't sign up for anything?
Motion.
All right. So no members, no other members?
Motion to close public portion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jaboor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye. Yes, the next two are carried.
Yes.
Please get Pasqualina, let her, the public portion at the end. Yeah, I believe. I'm anticipating this. All right, Mr. Farina, do we want to, public comments on resolutions? Thank you. Patricia Waiters?
You have to adjust it yourself. It's broken. Oh, anyway, you can hear me. My comments is on increases in the legal fees, again, from Ford, X and for another, increased by $40,000. But all of these is yours, Mr. Cohen. Could you just explain why, again, with the increases, after you already had a not-to-exceed amount?
Could you, resolution number, Patricia?
A1.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to put it on.
CA1, climate, CA2, all of them, all the legal fees. Why is it more money after you already had a not-to-increase?
For A1, with regard to rebuild by design, there are easements that we have to acquire so that we can build the wall, portions of the rebuild-by-design protective wall. So we have to hire a lawyer to effectuate obtaining legal rights to property, which are the easements, so that we can finish building the rebuild-by-design project.
And Pat, these expenses are reimbursed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
But that's not coming from y'all.
Excuse me?
This money not coming from y'all, you say, is protected from environmental protection? They're going to?
It is reimbursed by the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, so being reimbursed, I see it. I see it at the bottom. And what about CA1, $15,500 for a new contract amount of $2,000? The waterfront storm?
That one, we're, as you know, we're working on the bulkhead down on the waterfront. And while repairing that, there's a thing called MS4, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And it's how the storm water is flushed into the river in Hoboken. And we are required to test that periodically. And it's more, while we have the wall opened up, we're going to test it now to actually save money, because it would cost more to do it next year after the restoration.
And the county gave us money for that too, right? Remember the county for the, when they started building that black gate down there? I think it was last year, the county gave money toward this.
Well, this, I think this obligation of testing the outfalls is different from what the county gave us.
County did down at the waterfront.
Director Gonzalez, is that correct?
I apologize, yes.
Pardon? We're talking about the MS4 inspection?
Yes.
Is it, it's county money?
It is, no, that is the City of Hoboken's ordinance funding.
Yes.
Okay, and it's not the county?
No.
I'll make sure when I go to Freehold.
But the county, yeah. It's not the county.
Thank you.
All right. No other members of the public have signed up to speak on resolutions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, council members, for consent, or poll from consent?
CD6, Antonelli, Antonelli Cantor Rivera is not part.
Call it.
Hang a sec.
I'm being asked to wait a moment.
No, no, no.
CD6? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. T2.
And what did you, Councilman President Zano?
CD6.
CD6? I think I pronounced it correctly.
Yeah, you nailed it.
Why'd you laugh?
You nailed it. I know, because it's so formal.
CD6 and T2, anything else?
Nope.
And as I mentioned, CD5 is carried, so, okay. So everything other than CD6 and T2, Mr. Farina?
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jaboor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye. Okay. CD6, Councilman President Zano.
Director Brown, or, do I see him or not? I thought he was here, right? This is, why are we increasing? Is this just litigation we have with all the other lawsuits?
So this is, isn't CD6 rent levelling?
This is representation of the rent board, rent levelling board.
Not the, not our residents, correct? That's the other ones?
No, that is, this is not Sobel. That's correct. This is?
So this is our?
This is our rent levelling board attorney, yeah.
So the lawsuits that were put against us by the rent control things we're going against, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you'd like a breakdown of the matters, we can provide additional information after the meeting.
They're the only ones doing it, or we have other ones besides them?
I believe they're the only ones.
No, it can't.
Director Brown, there you are. We're looking for, I had a question on CD6, the rent levelling board, 40K increase.
There's no C04, is there?
Is this our only attorney that we pay for the, I just want to, it's a question. The only attorney for when we've been sued or suing everybody, correct? For the rent control violations? I don't, I think it's broken.
No, this is, when the board makes decisions and people appeal the decisions of the rent board, we have lawyers that defend us.
That's just, but we only have one, just this one?
It's just one firm, yes.
One firm.
Yeah, Antonelli Cantor is the rent board attorney, yes.
Is this unusual, this amount? Again, I've only been a year, like, last year is one number, and this year is another number.
It's been escalating. And, you know, we discussed this in our budget workshops. It's obviously higher than previous years, but given larger circumstances, it wasn't unexpected. So, but yes, compared to previous years, it's higher, but not necessarily unexpected.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jaboor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye. T2, a resolution amending a contract to McManam in Scotland and Baumann LLC for counsel on an agreement to rehabilitate the 916 Garden Street garage for an increase of $12,000 to a total contract amount of $27,000. That was Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Council President. So I talked to a lot of folks in the Fifth Ward over the last few weeks, and one of the questions I got a lot was, what's the status of the 916 Garden Street garage? It's a place that's near to my heart. I was first tenant in it in 2002, and I was the first, I was the last tenant in it in April of this year, when they evicted all of us, and basically gave up hope in trying to Band-Aid it and repair it and keep it going. The city last year issued an RFI, trying to figure out what would be the way to go in terms of future of this garage, and what it would look like and how it might operate in the future, maybe have a separate operator. What were the city's options? It was a money pit, as opposed, I mean, no one's looking to make money on our garages, but this one was costing the city a quarter million dollars a year just to keep it open on top of whatever it was costing to operate it. So this is a proposal, this is a resolution to allow for additional costs relating to an RFP that's going to be issued, to get this out the door, so that we can get responses as to what the city's options are on this. So something I'm supportive of, and hopefully this RFP goes out and we get some options for this council and the next mayor to consider as to what we're going to do with that property. In my opinion, it would be great if we could have a functioning garage at that site. I remember former Mayor Russo was involved with the opening of that garage and the design of that garage. I think there were trips to Germany involved with it. It was the first of its kind, but there are downsides to being the first of its kind, and I think, yeah, and keeping it going. So it turned out to be a very expensive garage to operate. So hopefully there's a future for this site, and, you know, but I just wanted to let the folks who live in that neighborhood and the Fifth Ward, and actually in the Sixth Ward also, which borders it, what's happening there. I think it actually might be in the Sixth Ward right now, the change of the lines. I think the location of that garage is actually on the Sixth Ward now, not the Fifth. But in any event, there are pokes from both wards that are former tenants there and are interested in knowing what the parking options are. And we're about to lose the parking lot over at 11th and Willow. One of the things we approved in the resolutions tonight was the lease, well, I think we're on first reading tonight, we're going to talk about the lease on that, so that's going to come up later tonight. So that's in the near future. So it would be great if we could come up with a solution for this garage. I'll wrap it up. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jaboor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos, did you?
Aye, yes, aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Ordinance introduction.
Public portion.
Public portion.
Comments. Alyssa, if you can provide that.
Thank you very much.
Everyone seems to be answering. I think Tiffany.
Stephen Dunn.
Oh.
And Steve, if you look, Greg, would you wave?
Hey.
Steve, gentleman in the back, you don't have to come up, but that's the, that's the director, acting director of transportation, so you can.
Hi there. I hope you like my feet.
Okay. Thank you. You got the clock?
Yep. I rise to propose that Hoboken radically change its transportation system. I got the idea from the now mayor of New York, Mr. Mandani, who unlike Trump's claim that he is not a communist, but rather a progressive Democrat. Therefore, I decided that my husband and I would take a test as how Hoboken's transportation system actually works. Suffice it to say, it does not work very well at all. My husband and I realized that when, after having left the confines of Hoboken. It took a full 15 minutes until we reached Union City, where we greeted with the monk's mugshot of the machine boss, Brian Stack. The whole trip back and forth took a full 25 minutes. Not good. One of the reasons is the fact that buses are not free. Consequently, consequently, as the patrons fumble around with sometimes a full 30 seconds each, the whole process was painfully slow. So as Martin Luther King observed, "I have a dream." My dream is that the new transportation system be created for Hoboken and exclusively to Hoboken. My dream is that no one would walk more than a couple of blocks to reach a bus, and no one would wait more than three and a half minutes to wait for a bus. So in short, starting at 15th Street, which is two blocks from the south of the northern terminus of Hoboken, the bus would then travel east to Washington Street and would then proceed to First Street, which is two blocks north of Observer Highway. It would then travel east to Madison Street, which is two blocks east of the western extremity of Hoboken, which is Harrison Street. So in short, the bus would move from 15th Street east to Washington Street, south to First Street, and then to Madison Street, and then back to 15th Street. Of course, a feasibility study would need to be done. Such a study would entail the size of buses as to what would be most efficient. And of course, such buses would be electric buses. A survey would need to be done as to the demand for such buses, and how many Hoboken workers would commute to work within Hoboken. How many Hoboken residents would utilize restaurants and businesses within Hoboken, and how tourists and visitors would benefit from such a free service. And finally, and perhaps most controversially, Hoboken, shocking as it may seem, should consider whether or not to increase a tax increase for Hoboken. Amortized over the entire population of Hoboken, such a tax would presumably be small. And of course, for lower-income workers who pay no tax at all, it would benefit them in particular. In short, I have a dream, which is to, at least to some small increment, increase the equality of Hoboken. I have a dream. I rest. I cave. Thank you.
I really don't need this. How many directors back there, real quick? Three? All right. This is the public portion, right? Not the only agenda. I'm going to turn this paper around, because I know people watching. I'm out here in my pajamas, y'all, like I promised. This says 475. Everybody can see that? And I'm going to say this, each one of those 475 is near and dear to my heart. It means a lot to me, because the fight continues, and it's free to fight. So I'm going to continue to fight. No money needed, free. No victory, no money, no sponsors, no big political bosses, no payback plan, pay-to-play, little job in the back burner waiting for me to take it, no mailers and poster boards, no promises of a job, and leave my directors alone. I say that to say this. You guys watching this out in the public do not realize, and I'm afraid from getting emotion, you know my situation, Mike. You do not realize how important the next 14 days mean to Hoboken. You heard our voices. I never seen that many debates in my life. I've been running, and I tell y'all all the time, whether I get low numbers, high numbers, two numbers, if it was me and Manny, two votes, I would have still been pleased. Can I tell you why? I'm going to continue to fight until we get real justice. Because when you acting under the authority of the people, but you acting unethical, no self-esteem, no dignity, no integrity, you think people ain't going to find that out? Now, we got a runoff slowly approaching, and this is how I look at it. Emily going to have people that dislike her. Emily going to have people that like her, that's sitting in jobs right now, hoping that's your protection. But Emily that's running should focus on the people. I sat next to you in debates, you promised that, that was your campaign promises. Can you take that? My question to you tonight, can you take that into your runoff? Can you take that and be loyal to the people?
Of course.
I'm serious, and I feel cocky because numbers, numbers don't matter. We seen that, poor Bloomberg still crying. I'm telling you again, the people matter. The people are getting fed up. I don't care if two people follow me, I will definitely hold each and every one of y'all accountable, and I'm serious. I'm here to congratulate y'all on a positive note, and all the ones, and your father's favorite words, Mike, go get them, Pat. I'm going to continue to come and get them. I'm going to be here regardless to what I told you tonight when I walked in here. I extend my hand to you, you said I already got a ticket. Okay? I'm here to work with all of y'all. I will collaborate and work with each and every one of you, okay? Each and every one of you, but it's about the people. I never seen such a dirty campaign in my life, never. I'm heartbroken. I went to the dollar store, y'all. Y'all know I don't got no money. Remember I called you, they took everything. They took my table, that was $36. Dollar poster boards, stuff I went to the library and printed. library and printed. Y'all don't have to do that to me. And then I was attacked with the whole Fourth Ward, like a handful of them, and everybody down there that stopped me and said, "We voted for you." I love hearing that, I laugh when people say that now, because numbers don't lie. I was attacked, bamboozled, threatened, intimidated for this election, and guess what? Guys, thank God, closing saying this, four hundred and seventy-five votes cannot ruin an election, okay? So, it wasn't Pat Waiters that ruined the election, but it's Pat Waiters that's getting ready to work hard in this next fourteen upcoming runoff election. Do you hear me, Mike? Do you hear me, Emily? Loud and clear, I'm ready, and don't touch my directors.
Manuel Rivera Saler?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council, members of the public. Yesterday, the voters of the Sixth Ward made their decision. While the results were not what I hoped, I stand here with gratitude, humility, and deep respect for the democratic process. I want to begin by sincerely thanking every resident who took the time to vote, whether they voted for me or not. Your participation is what keeps Hoboken strong, vibrant, and united. To those who supported me from the beginning, those who signed my petition just to just give me a chance to be on the ballot, those who stood with me on the sidewalk, those who opened their doors, and opened their hearts, and even their hopes, I am profoundly grateful for your belief in me, your encouragement, your trust, are a gift I will never forget. I entered this race because I deeply care for the Sixth Ward, and I want our community to be prosperous, safe, clean, and well-represented. I wanted to, I'm sorry, Council President, I wanted to ensure that our residents, families, seniors, small businesses, owners, young professionals, that felt heard and represented. That dedication does not end with an election result. My love for the Sixth Ward and Hoboken is not tied to a title, is tied to the streets where I grew up, the neighborhoods I know, and the future we all share. To the new councilwoman-elect, congratulations on your victory. The people of the Sixth Ward have placed their trust in you, and with that trust comes deep responsibility. Now you carry the weight of representing every voice in our ward, whether they supported you or not. I sincerely wish wisdom, strength, and an open heart as you take this role. And if you remain accessible, transparent, and willing to listen, I will be ready to support initiatives that serve our community, to improve the lives of our residents, because in the end, it's not about who wins or loses, it is about those people we all have to serve. As for me, I will continue being involved, advocating for what is right, and working with anyone who shares a genuine commitment and willingness for the Sixth Ward and Hoboken. Thank you, Council President, thank you, members of the council, thank you, residents of the Sixth Ward. Once again, I will take the memories that I shared with all of you, and again, I wish everyone who won and had a great victory last night, continued success, God bless you all. Council President, God bless you, God bless you all, God bless the Sixth Ward, God bless the great city of Hoboken. Slava Ukraine, glory to Ukraine, Pedro Yemaslava, glory to the heroes. Thank you, Council President, and I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Soler?
My name is Pasqualina Nunsia. I don't speak good English, I don't really talk good English, but I really laugh. Just the few words are the most important. After the ninety years that I apply, I put all of the paper for the data, for chiropractors, money, everything, they want me to get tired, frustrated, I said, I get frustrated, I know, no. No. This letter was did by a lawyer, Brana, General Counsel. Okay, I read just a few words more important. This, if you attend the plaque, there's still more. There's still additional step required to attend a D A and, A D A parking space, and each step my end in reject. What these words mean? That's mean, they intimidate me. What is significant? Each word is significant. You understand what I mean? Okay, if they say, even each step can be reject, or negative in bet, what this mean? Then it said, the consul got a meringue, that's letter, Mariana lawyer, Brana lawyer, and the rest of the company, just want aggravate me, okay? I'm tired today, the way I was tired of Mariana, when you want to stealing me money, to like all of the FBI, finish the task. This is not finished, this supposed to feel embarrassed, they say, how many years we say we cannot do? I give all of the paper, I pay the money, I give a paper for the debt, I show the picture when I was hurt, God save me, thank God. What the hell they want? Why these words, they think I don't really. Now I'm nervous, I shake, I really, I don't write in English, but I really, I understand the word, they can be reject, it's not a nicer word. How many more years I gotta wait? I'm not twenty, but thank God where I am, but that's disgusting, the way they do. Will we have, especially from three to first, a second? Too many handicap, too many. You should change the name, they say, this name, handicap, ton, no Hoboken, it's disgusting. You know how many people got, even at the plaque, for no reason, just go there. I went a two-time motor vehicle, Gina telling me go to motor vehicle, I went, two years ago. They give me the paper, and I give it to her. Now, they send me again, not long ago, I went to motor vehicle, they said, F you want, you don't have, so why they make me go back a foot? They make me frustrated, the consul meringue, got a talk, another consul will, I have not fed a lawyer, I know you're lawyer, but I don't mean to include you in this, but they put the sign, we're not gonna be seen for nobody, okay? Thank you very much for listening, started the thing, I put the sign. Thank God, I'm more than eighty-four, and I'm empty, thanks to God. Why I gotta go five, no park, five, six block away, and then I carry in a bag, for few minutes, one twenty, they put in a handicap for load zone, they think, you put a load zone, everybody comprehend, so put handicap for load zone. I parked for one minute, right where they called the people, they come, want to give me ticket, I was there. I said, I just move the car, and then the center put the paper, want to say no park, I say only this car got a park, with this player, there was different car, different player, the sign used to be one-thirty, Second Street, and they put one twenty, will we have? They just to do this, I know, the lady who go to work at 7:00 AM, come at 7:00 PM, so they can use for load zone, I don't care if they use load zone, I'm not against, but you need the space, but not treat other people for stupid, okay? They want to treat me for stupid, I'm frustrated with Mariana, frustrated with a lawyer, and more other thing. I want my sign, I deserve, I pay taxes, I pay water, I pay sewer, I pay two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar a year for the flower of Washington Street, I pay facility for the sewer, what the hell they want? They just want make me frustrated, want to treat me for stupid, they find the wrong one. Lot of people was arrest, lot, not just one, but you can inform. Thank you very much for listening, the sign be put, or everybody feel so, thank you.
Thank you very much. No other members of the public are signed up to speak?
Closed public portion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to first readings.
Orders for introduction and orders amending to and execute of the lease agreement between the City of Hoboken Community Investment Strategies Incorporated as to the property located at 259 11th Street, also known as 1033 Willow Avenue, Block 172, Lot 17.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos, sorry. Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Orders for introduction, amending Chapter 190-11 entitled Loading Zones, designated to change loading zone hours at various locations on Washington Street.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Radar, I think you were at...
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an order and amending, sorry, introduction on order amending Chapter 190-9, entitled Stop Streets Designated to Add Multi-Way Stop Controls at the Intersection of Park Avenue and 13th Street.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Orders for introduction, amending Chapter 147 Mobile Rental Food Vendors and Chapter 179A Taxi Cabs to Remove Fixed Calendar of Renewal Dates and Transaction to Rolling Approval and Renewal.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Orders for introduction, amending Chapter 192-4A, entitled Parking for Persons with Disability to Remove a Reserve Space on Willow Avenue and Add a Reserve Space on Boomfield Street.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
That's it? Okay.
Motion to close?
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
That's good. I thought we, yeah, I was gonna say something about the opportunity. Joe, yeah, Mike over here. Sure. He's just gonna congratulate you in your business.
Of course she is.
You know, he could... I was, I said that to Jim. You and Elliot. Well, and everyone else, you know.
She offering now, or did she have colleagues?
Yeah.
What? I thought she...